Digital Hammer. Ready?
Ready.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could please have a roll call, Jason?
Council President McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, and first up, we have a proclamation, and it's Juneteenth, 2022.
All right, proclamation, whereas we acknowledge the notice of freedom given to the slaves of the state of Texas on June 19th, 1865, and whereas we give honor and respect on this day to the suffering of our ancestors, and we acknowledge the evils of slavery and its aftermath. And whereas on this celebration, we think about the moment in 1888 when 300 black men from Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky were determined to escape the terrorism of the post-Civil War South as they boarded trains for the Washington Territory and settled in King County mining camps. And whereas the story and outspokenness of James Shepperson, an educated black man who settled in Roslyn, Washington in 1888, inspired many other blacks to flee the South at great risk and pursue new opportunities in Washington State as miners. And whereas we acknowledge African-American freedom, contributions, and achievements within this community, past and present. And whereas during the Juneteenth event, we appreciate the African-American experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities. And whereas we commit to working together toward equity for all and expanding economic, educational, and career opportunities for all those in our community. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022 to be Juneteenth, 2022, in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this celebration and witness whereof. I have herein too set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of June, 2022. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Council President McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Tonight, to accept our proclamation is our own James Alberston, so.
So I'll make this real quick. I was asked if I would accept this, and I was thinking, okay, well, I have to say something. So my, my parents were born in Texas. And in particular, my, so, you know, obviously, they've, I've known about Juneteenth all of my life, even though I grew up in Columbus, Ohio, in the north. And, but it wasn't celebrated pretty much in the north. Really, in my memory, maybe in the last 10 years or so, more acknowledgement. And I even had to ask my mother, you know, when, when was Juneteenth, is it the 17th or the 19th? Which is why, actually, they call it Juneteenth, because it wasn't really determined, like, when was the actual date? But I know that Juneteenth in Texas, for my mother, was always a big deal. And unfortunately, my mother passed away last year. And I wish she was around to see that, that it's become a federal holiday, because I know she'd say, hmm, ain't that something? And so I'm gonna accept this on behalf of my mother. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, James. All right. Next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Juneteenth is the celebration commemorating the emancipation of the last enslaved African-Americans on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas. Several community groups have activities planned for June 18th. The annual community barbecue, presented by Doug Baldwin Jr. and the United Way of King County. That's Saturday, June 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Rent Memorial Stadium. Tickets are $10 per person. And Still We Rise, Free Community Celebration, Saturday, June 18th at noon, located at the Black Lives Matter mural at 302 Lake Street. That's actually Lake Avenue South. And Juneteenth Celebration and Festival, Free, Presented by Renton School District, Saturday, June 18th, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Campbell Elementary, 6418 South 124th Street in Seattle. Activities will include a barbecue, games, a job fair, and more. For more information and to register, go to co- co-partnerships.org, sorry. On Tuesday, June 28th, the Urban Forestry Division will be doing tree removal for public and road user safety on Maple Valley Highway on the westbound side, west of the parking area for Riverview Park. Traffic will be reduced to one lane in either direction on the eastbound side from 9:30 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. There will also be brief closures of all four lanes of traffic due to the position of the tree being removed. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentnoah.gov/traffic. All projects, or weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Okay, thank you. Next up is audience comment, and we have nobody signed up here in person. We do have one person signed up remotely. When your name is called, you have five minutes to speak. Please state your name, city of residence, and the topic you'll be discussing, and.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have one person. Diane, go ahead.
It's a little bit quiet.
Music to your ears. Diane Johnson, I'm the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and I come to the council today in my role with the chamber to let the council know about some of the concerns that we're having about service in our community. And specifically about the extended stay. So this is something that we've already spoken to the police and to the administration about, but we feel it prudent to let the council know as well. I come today to speak on behalf of the business community, who has made outreach to the chamber about their experiences thus far with the extended stay on Hookdale. As I'm sure the council is aware, King County purchased the extended stay for the reported purpose of a transitional shelter with a certain percent, I believe 10% fee held for Renton guests, and the rest would be filled with those maybe services. Maybe those who are even already receiving services from the county through Catholic community services in other de-antestation facilities. I personally was really proud of our business community when they learned about the purchase and the intended use of the same. And I'm certain to identify it as the intended use, as it's now being reported to us by service organizations and those who are staying in the shelter, that this might not be a transitional facility, but it could be considered a permanent housing approach. And I have no opinions to that, other than to alert the council of that what is, might be changed as an intended use. But again, I was proud of our businesses surrounding the location, on their willingness to speed us through as a success and as a community supporting the same. Despite their fears and apprehension after seeing what transpired at the Red Lion facility and the impacts and unquestionable impacts on the surrounding businesses, the businesses nearby the extended stay were eager to be a part of the community embracing solution. We have here a mention of an accredited international aeronautical university, Emory Riddle, immediately next door to this location. They share a parking lot with the extended stay that their students are in. They were the first to reach out to offer to host a welcome barbecue or allow the use of their facilities, their computer labs for training or job skills development. The local gas station next door worked to change some of their supplies that were stocked to make them less grab-and-go for the commuters that pass by, and instead are bringing in stables and sundries that might be beneficial to the new residents next door who have kitchen units within their facility. The gas station also immediately employed two of the residents from the facility to bring them in as employees at the gas station. Other businesses have made outreach and offers and have been a part of the discussions with the city and the chamber on how to best support this new neighbor. Well, guests began arriving on April 12th, it wasn't even before the end of month of April, and I had guests from the extended stay in my office at the chamber. They were concerned that they are now responsible for their own food supplies, because this is not a shelter, but it is a lease agreement. And their food stamps were running out, and they did not have access, being so far off the bus route to food. I do point out that the city and human services, Guy Williams, made arrangements for the emergency feeding program to come in once a week with food, as well as with a vegetarian food truck. The chamber also connected with Salvation Army, the Food Bank, as well as Sustainable Renton to try to connect the resources that we have within our community to that program to continue to help provide supplemental services accordingly. Our business community is now reaching out, and they are having substantial challenges. Some with the guests that are located within the facility. They've had theft, they've had damage, they've had vandalism, they have people sleeping on their property. There are wetlands and greenery shrubbery around the extended stay that maybe could use a review with a sub-10 approach or visual as to clearing out with some of the encampments that are starting to build up between the extended stay and the surrounding businesses. And while the Renton Police Department has been absolutely magnificent in their job in connecting with the businesses, responding to terminal reports, and making those businesses feel heard, I don't believe it's their primary responsibility to attend to the needs and making sure that that good neighbor agreement is being enforced with the guests that are there on the property. And I also bring to the council's awareness that the surrounding businesses have pointed out that there are maybe less than desirable individuals with not the greatest of intentions that are coming in and what they have described as preying on the vulnerable populations at the extended stay. So I bring it to the council's awareness. I know this is a community approach and agreement, but we really, from the business community, hope that we can circle in and make sure we eliminate some of these challenges as they start to present themselves, so we don't have a repeat of the impact that we saw at Red Lion.
All right, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. There are five items on the agenda. Are there any items that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I'd like to pull item D, please.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
Unless there's any other items to be pulled, I move that the council approve the consent agenda minus item D.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the consent agenda be adopted minus item D. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item D relates to BNO topic that was discussed in detail at the council retreat. There is no reason to refer this back through the Finance Committee, and so I move that this item be approved by council concur.
Second.
Second.
Oh, okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilman, Council President McGurven, that item D be moved or be approved by council concur. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The committee of the whole has one report to present.
Right, Committee of the Whole Committee Report, Allocation of Lodging Tax Funding for 2022, Round 2 Funding. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve allocations for 2022 Lodging Tax Fund as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as follows. Empowering New Year's Eve Celebration, 15,000. Emerald Dynasty Entertainment Polynesian Arts and Musical Festival, 15,000. National Black MBA Association, Seattle Chapter, the PWOCN Summit, 10,000. National Black MBA Association, Seattle Chapter, Juneteenth Royal Ball, 10,000. King Kong Northwest, King Kong 2022, looks like 5,000. Real Renton, 2022, Seattle Film Summit, 20,000. Tazvier, Tazvier South Asian Film Festival, 5,000. Northwest Youth Music Association, Seattle Summer Music Games, another 5,000, for a total recommendation of $85,000. The committee further recommends authorize authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the contracts with the successful applicants to expend budgeted funds on the proposed additional marketing initiatives. And this is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the committee of the whole report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the committee of the whole report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has a few committee reports.
Okay, the first one is regarding continued pooling of the Senate House Bill 1406, Sales Tax Credit Funds with South King Housing and Homeless Partners. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff recommendation to continue pooling SHB 1406 Sales Tax Credit Funds with the South King Housing and Homeless Partners under the existing 2021 Inter-Local Agreement, Companion Agreement, which is our Contract 21-177, direct staff to provide an update, a recommendation by June 15th, 2024, on continued pooling for 2025 and beyond. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston. Council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next item is regarding the 2021 Title IV Docket 16, Item D 194, which is Retail Pet Sales. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt regulations for the 2021 Title IV Docket Group 16, Item D 194 Retail Pet Sales. Additionally, the committee recommends establishing a date certain for the regulations to be effective, and that the date shall be January 1st, 2023. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that the ordinance be present, be presented for first reading at the next council meeting. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
We have talked about retail pet sales for quite some time. And so I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding the 2022 Title IV Docket 17, Group A, Docket 208 Surface Water Design Manual Update. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt the 2022 Title IV Docket Group 17, D 208 Surface Water Design Manual Update. The committee further recommends that Section 613 of Policy and Procedure 807 be waived, and that the related ordinance be presented for first and second and final reading and adopted at tonight's council meeting. This, again, is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur in the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee has a committee report to present.
Okay, Public Safety Committee Committee Report. This is regarding the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Fiscal Year 2021 Local Solicitation. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to sign the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG Program Fiscal Year 2021 Local Solicitation. This is signed by the committee vice chair and alternate member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Public Safety Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Vaughn, that the council concur with the Public Safety Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has four reports this evening.
Okay, the first report from Finance Committee is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment of $3,915,287.52 for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers and no wire transfers. And then payroll, a total payment of $1,599,582.83 for payroll vouchers, including 611 direct deposits and 11 checks. This is the May 1st through 15th pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding a reorganization of the Executive Services Department. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the request to reallocate approved budget dollars to support the implementation of an executive services department reorganizational change, adding one administrative secretary, one salary grade A09 to the Information Technologies Division. The, the Q2 budget adjustment will reflect the reallocation of the existing dollars. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding the Playground Equipment Replacement Project for Philip Arnold Park. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the construction contract with Northwest Playground Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $376,852.92 for the Philip Arnold Park Playground Equipment Replacement Project. The project has been budgeted in the appropriate account. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the contract. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppo- oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final report is regarding a grant for the Kulan North Waterwalk Legislative Appropriation. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the grant contract with the State Department of Commerce to accept $1,312,220 in funding for the Kulan North Waterwalk Repair and Enhancement Project. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the grant contract with the Department of Commerce. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Okay, we are on to legislation. We have four ordinances tonight.
Hey, the first ordinance is regarding the 2022 Renton Surface Water Design Manual that was approved by the Planning and Development Committee. It is on for first and second reading tonight. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4630(c), 4630.i, and section 411.190 of the Renton Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2022 City of Renton Surface Water Design Manual and adopting by reference the July 2021 King County Storm Water Pollution Prevention Manual, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move this be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Right, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4630(c) and 4630.i and section 411.190 of the Renton Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2022 City of Renton Surface Water Design Manual and adopting by reference the July 2021 King County Storm Water Pollution Prevention Manual, authorizing corrections and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call, sir. Let's rewind. The second reading requires a roll call.
So, Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, next up, we have an ordinance regarding the BNO tax increase. This is, this is the one that Councilmember O'Halloran pulled. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 525.4a of the Renton Municipal Code, by adjusting the business and occupation tax rate, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on final, second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
Right, the final two ordinances are for second and final reading only. The first one's regarding a code interpretations docket item 205. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending chapter 4.1 of the Renton Municipal Code, subsections 42115f, 244055a, 46060j1, and 47060b of the Renton Municipal Code, definitions in sections 411.10, 411.40, and 411.140 of the Renton Municipal Code, and section 924 of the Renton Municipal Code, codifying administrative code interpretations from 2019 to 2022, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be adopted as read. The second reading requires a roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
Right, and the final ordinance for second and final reading is regarding a salary table adjustment due to the police contract being adopted last week. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the 2022 City Rent salary table to reflect collectively bargained changes and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Any discussion? Second reading requires a roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries, and we are on to new- All right, motion carries, and we are on to new business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I would like to announce is that on Monday, June twentieth, there will be no meetings in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Then, on Monday, June twenty-seventh, the Committee of the Whole will meet at five forty-five p.m. at the Council Conferencing Center, and also via video conference. There's one item on the agenda, and that is the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget update. Following the Committee of the Whole, we will convene as a council here in chambers at seven p.m., also via video conference, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up is Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June twenty-seventh, at four thirty p.m., the Planning and Development Committee will meet in the council conference room, and by video conference. We have three items on the agenda. Docket sixteen, Group A, Storm Water Source Pollution Control Update, and Emerging Issues and C E D. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.